We're gonna get started tonight. We're gonna get started tonight, um, welcome everyone. Welcome everyone.
Hello. Hello.
Good evening, Eric Moore. Uh, my name is Brad Lloydman. I am the chairperson of Community Board Two Manhattan. And it is a great pleasure to be here in Chinatown for our, I think our fourth or third, uh, it's our sixth meeting and it's our third large meeting, uh, that we've had in the neighborhood. So, uh, we're very, very honored to be here. Uh, before I introduce the folks on stage and, uh, let everyone know what our plan for the night is as we discuss the important issue of tenants' rights in our neighborhood, I'm gonna turn the mic over briefly to Ed Maugham, who's gonna say a few words and welcome the community. Ed?
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Brad, and we are very, very appreciative of you, your establishment, this committee, Chinatown Committee, and with all your leadership, who could be here tonight. And, uh, we're代表这个第二社区，非常感谢大家今天都来，这非常好。We, we appreciate everyone coming tonight to make history because this is so important for Chinatown, for Community Board Two, for all people residents in this area. And, uh, and this is very important, especially I read, you know, the Sing Down News a couple of weeks ago, there's so many cases, uh, prominent, there's a one small apartment, five families live in there, four hundred square feet, four hundred square feet, unbelievable. So anyway, thank you very much, and also thank all of this Community Board Two, all the other, uh, uh, committees, social services, education, and, uh, task force, red task force, uh, passport, free group, and I thank you.
Thanks very much, Ed. Um, so, Community Board Two formed, uh, a couple of months ago, a tenants' rights task force, which is chaired by Don McPherson, who's to my left. The goal of the task force is to raise the important issue of tenants', uh, rights and, um, discuss with our local elected officials how we can better represent those concerns before Community Board Two. Uh, tonight here, um, we have a range of experts who will be speaking to you, uh, about their, uh, respective areas. Uh, we have a tenant lawyer who's gonna give an overview of his practice and kind of the state of play for tenants, uh, in our neighborhood in Lower Manhattan. Uh, we have, uh, a group of advocates, uh, from the largest tenant rights organization uh, in the state, who's gonna give, uh, an assessment of what is occurring in all the NAF City Council, uh, in connection with tenants' issues. And then we have grassroots organizations, who's kind of gonna give us, uh, the, uh, state of affairs closer to home and how you can get involved in organizing at the local level. Um, without further ado, uh, I am going to hand it over to my colleague, Don McPherson, um, just after I introduce all of my fellow community board members who are here, um, on stage with me. Uh, this is a meeting of three committees, um, our tenants' rights task force, our Chinatown Committee, and our Social Services and Education Committee, uh, hence all the people on the stage. Uh, but that's good because it shows, uh, a lot of interest and concern at the community board level. So if I could introduce the folks on stage, Sean Swinging, uh, Ray Avater, Doris Diether, uh, Monsi Hong, uh, Kimmy Lee, oh, there's Kimmy, uh, Steve Ashkenazi, Keen Burder. Keen is the chair of our Social Services and Education Committee, Jim Solomon, who I think, Menadino, uh, is the chair of our Chinatown Committee, Don McPherson, who is the chair of our tenants' rights task force, Phil Mahino, uh, Kiwan Ma, Namely Winder, and David Gruber. And of course, everyone knows Ed Maugham. And just because I always like to do it, let's give a round of applause for Ed Maugham. Um, so after we have, uh, our three experts in the different areas discuss, uh, their issues of concern, then there's gonna be time for a brief Q and A, which will be managed by Kim, Jim, and Don. And then after that, you will, uh, have the opportunity to address the committee during our public session. If you wanna speak during the public session, there are cards in the back, and you could simply fill those out, bring them forward, and we'll call you on that, at that time. After the presenter's speak, uh, you'll have the opportunity, as I said, to ask questions, and you could just simply line up here at the microphone, so we'll let you know about that. As I said, we have a tenant lawyer here, and we have two organizers, one at the grassroots levels and one at the state's, uh, level. Uh, and then finally, I've been told that I should probably just briefly describe what Community Board Two is and what we're trying to do. Um, Community Board Two is the, uh, representatives, uh, for our neighborhood, really at the grassroots level. Uh, we're all volunteers, uh, we perform a number of functions in the city charter, uh, including zoning, landmarks, uh, and sanitation, and who else is represented here? Um, public, uh, services and education, um, and, um, landmarks and institutions?
Street fairs.
Street fairs. Um, so we make advisory opinions to our local elected officials about a whole range of issues that come before them. And part of our process is to hear from you, and, uh, that is our mandate, and that's what we're trying to fill this evening. Um, there are fifty members of the community board. We're appointed by, um, our city council members and by our local, um, uh, by rather our Manhattan Borough President. And, um, I should introduce the elected officials who are represented here tonight, uh, including, um, the representative from the Manhattan Borough President's office, Hunter Johansson. Hunter, say hello. From Speaker Quinn's office, uh, meeting back here with us tonight, uh, Kate Selinger, who's the district manager, uh, District Chief Starbuck, Kate. Kate's colleague, uh, who specializes in tenants' issues is also there here, Camilla Shiddin. From State Senator Tom Wayne's office, Crystal Mopon is here. Crystal, where are you? And Crystal's here with her colleague, Renee O'Malley. And, uh, we're joined tonight by civil woman Deborah Blake. And, uh, Michael Chen from, uh, Speaker Sheldon Silver's office. And I would be remiss if I did not introduce the gentleman who keeps all of this running by clockwork, our district manager, Bob Romer. And we've been joined by State Senator Martin Connor. Before we introduce our two elected officials who will be speaking along with Speaker Quinn's representative, um, we're gonna hear a presentation, uh, and to introduce that speaker, I'm gonna hand it over to the chair of potentialised task force, Don McPherson.
Hi, everybody. Just very briefly, I wanted everyone to realize that Brad Hunt was very effective in putting all of this issue up front tonight, and Keen sort of surrounded the floor to do it. I want to thank the elected officials that have appeared, and I wanted to just briefly mention one of the reasons why this comes to full front.
No, people can't share events.
Sorry. Within the last several years... Oh, okay. Within the last several years, there have been news reports as well as reports from individuals about the degree of abuse that tenants have experienced, and it's gradually become groundswell that, uh, many of us have not been able to ignore. Some of us even have experienced it ourselves. So, this is something that the community is aware of, as well as the community board, because many of us have experienced the problems that we are experiencing. So, uh, without any delay, I would like to introduce, um, Stephen DeCastro, who is a, uh, attorney who handles primarily holdover actions now in courts representing tenants. He's also been a tenant organizer, and he's a very effective member of the new committee which we have formed, so I'd like to introduce Stephen DeCastro. Are you here? Thank you.
Thank you. I see a lot of familiar faces in the crowd, and, uh, it's interesting to see, um, people I recognize from, uh, my world, which is the housing court and the housing organizing world, and all the clip world, and Martin Connor, who spent some late nights, uh, together at the Board of Elections. Um, and, uh, as stated, I'm going to, uh, give a, just a short presentation about the characteristics of this district and why I believe that Community Board Two should focus on its tenant issues. Because, as most of you know, tenant legislation and, uh, rent stabilization code is enacted in the state of New York because, uh, New York City has declared, uh, a housing emergency. And if New York City is declared a housing emergency, I think that you need to look at the specifics of, um, this district, and you will see that, um, this is a very tenant dense district with a lot of important tenant problems. Uh, the conflict between landlords and tenants in this district, uh, is, uh, is, uh, is more intense, um, than in other parts of the city. And, uh, so, I think that there could be an advisory opinion from the community board that, uh, the tenants' needs in this district are even more special than, uh, than regularly seen citywide. Um, so, um, I'm going to, uh, go with that, but really, my message is about, um, Community Board Two's need for tenant education. Did we see something back there? Brad? For tenant education and what tenant, and how to structure tenant education forums in Lower Manhattan. And, uh, so, uh, but, uh, we'll get to that a little later. First of all, I gotta say something. I, uh, speak a lot at different public, uh, events like this regarding tenants' rights, tenants' forums, sometimes, uh, it's about very specific problems, people bring their specific cases, their specific issues, sometimes it's policy-wise, but what I think we can have to work on is that, uh, these tenant forums are always well-attended. However, an organization will hold a tenant forum, and then I find that they never hold one again, haha, which is a problem, because my issue is something like this. Year by year, seasonal work, you know, like the people can depend on, uh, is class in session now? Okay, people can depend on, uh, seeing a forum the same time of every year, and then the, it could be toppled, because if you have several tenant forums, you can really dig in and say, okay, we're gonna deal with these special needs and those special needs, and it is not really sufficient to do a tenant forum where you, uh, say, okay, we're, we're gonna do a tenant forum, and all tenants show up, and they have all, all these different interests, and then we try to give good information to all of them, although there's the issue of landlord tenants too dense for that purpose. And so that's why I've got the tree up here, because the idea of, of CB2 being one place to, uh, to year after year really, uh, position itself as a source, uh, the tenants could go to is really important now. This is, uh, part of my presentation regarding the special characteristics of Community Board Two. I didn't have enough research to really do Community Board Two, but I just took one zip code in on Community Board, 10012. And I took a look at this, uh, census map. The darker green arrows show, uh, where tenants dominate 100%, and the lighter green down to yellow, down to, uh, light yellow, it looks to me, uh, mean there are less tenants in. And what this is showing is the ratio of rent-occupied, uh, housing units as opposed to housing units that are owned or co-op kind of this kind of thing. Now, um, this is what the picture looks like citywide, and if you look at, um, all the rent-occupied housing units, what you see is a ratio of about, I think that's 70% of, for, um, for how many renting apartments there are as opposed to all the apartments in New York City. About 2 million rent-stable, rent-controlled, and some of them are getting rate rental apartments. Now, when you look at zip code 10012, the zip code is post by, right here, then you, uh, then you see a ratio that's even higher, and this is about 83%. Um, and, uh, what that, what it means is you have more tenants here, they're more densely packed, there's more economic activity over here, there's more development activity, and what, when you have more development activity, you have landlords who are trying to find landlord law firms. And you have landlord law firms who are marketing to landlords, saying that, okay, you give us this building, we'll empty this building out within five years, and we'll go ahead and invest the years coming in to, to call these folks and try to get more information about alternative addresses they could live in. And this is especially true in Chinatown, because what I've seen is a lot of times, um, Chinese immigrants, uh, find apartments in voluntarily in Chinatown, and these apartment, uh, apartment units are owned by Chinese landlords. And a lot of times, after a while, people from the same village share the same apartment, and then what happens is the original tenants of that apartment are already gone, and, uh, other, uh, immigrants are, are in that apartment, possibly in over credit situation. And then, what happens is the Chinese landlord sells into a non-Chinese landlord. Non-Chinese landlord hires a landlord law firm, tries to get rid of everybody from the building, because he says, I don't even know who these people are, I don't even know who my tenants are. And, you know, I have a tenant on the record who moved out 10 years ago. And, uh, so, we see this over and over again in Chinatown, and, uh, so, it's a real serious issue. Um, and, uh, yeah, there are issues in our community that a lot of times are clustered around the people in the community, so it's not just an issue-based thing, it's a, it's kind of like a constituency-based thing. A lot of elderly tenants who are, uh, who often raise these issues, screen senior citizens' rent exception. The tax evasion, uh, system which freezes, uh, an elderly person's rent at a certain level, all the subsequent rent increases are paid by a tax break to the landlord, uh, and people want to maintain their, uh, participation in the program, rent control courts. But, it's kind of funny, we have 50,000 rent-controlled, uh, units citywide, but a lot of times, this is an issue regarding elderly folks, because rent-controlled units, most of them are held, uh, for more than 30 years. But, uh, a large amount of these people, half of the people who live in rent-controlled units are less than 50 years of age, and so, rent control, even though it's shrinking every year, is gonna be around for quite some time. Um, and so, then you have issues of Collier's case. So, there's a famous, uh, case regarding a Chinese immigrant with a long-term tenant in, uh, an apartment, and he accumulated so much stuff in his apartment that, uh, he was brought to house court. And so, with our elderly tenants living long-term in their apartments, a lot of times they're accumulating possibly too much stuff. And so, Collier's cases, we call those cases, uh, stuffed apartment, Collier's case. And then issues of repair, sometimes landlord decides that he is going to, uh, not repair, uh, these, uh, old rent-controlled apartments, uh, because, uh, tenants only paying $300, $400 monthly rent. And there are, uh, there's very little, um, there's very little recourse for, uh, elderly tenants to assert their rights to repair, but that's not the problem. The problem is, a lot of times elderly tech, uh, elderly tenants are afraid to assert their rights to repair. And we need more forums and penitentiaries to say, those elderly tenants have a right to decent housing, and they should understand how to advocate for that. And then, of course, the famous issue of Florida residences, where elderly folks will have other places, so retirement places where they live, and since they're retired, they've spent a large mass of time there, and there could be issues where, uh, that tenant could be accused by the landlord of living, staying in Florida. Uh, and so, newer residents, and remember, um, it does, this is just rough, like people who are elderly, you know, young people, old people, can have the same problems. I'm just talking about, uh, making a generalization. You have a lot of people who are coming in new, who are, um, who don't know whether they're being rent overcharged. Uh, and, uh, of course, that means that, you know, they're being rent-stabilized, if they are rent stabilized. Sometimes a landlord comes in and says, okay, well, you can move into this apartment, and then he is kind of silent on the issue of whether the, uh, the apartment is rent stabilized. Uh, that causes, uh, problems, because then they might talk to somebody like me, and I could tell them, hey, you know, you're not only rent stabilized, but, you know, you're being overcharged as well, so, um, that is an issue that is important to this community, and happens a lot in this community, because, you know, you have a lot of young people moving in, they say nobody signed, and this is a big problem. Other good tenant topics, and I have a pet, very important issue for people, whether they can have a pet. The issue of repairs, you can have one forum just about how to get repaired. You can get good tenant organizations to come in to assist on that, you can get somebody from HBD to talk about how to use 311. Uh, bedbugs, of course, I have the major case in New York City regarding bedbugs, unfortunately, because I get all these calls in my office about people who wanna talk about bedbugs all day in my life. Um, and, uh, this issue is really important too, because if we don't check it now, we're gonna have a major epidemic, and bedbugs can tell you are hard to kill, and they're not a joke. So, um, and then, of course, noisy forests and restaurants, and, uh, this issue about landlords creating illegal hotels out of their apartment buildings. Now, the tenant universe, I, you know, what it means to be in the tenant movement, it's really about, um, it's, uh, people need education, they need, um, advocacy, and they need help. I don't know why I didn't just write that down. So, what we need is, we need the forums, any tenant forums to be complete, I think, because we need three people in the pack, uh, to, and, uh, to meet those kinds of divisions. Need a lawyer, need an organizer or caseworker. Now, this is depending on what the topic is, and maybe a caseworker would be better than an organizer, maybe the other way around. Oh, you can have a really good tenant forum on how to do a rent strike, and then you'll have 500 people there. And then legislation, need those elected officials to, so that people know what's going on. So, now, I, uh, I did a little section here called Forum Do's and Don'ts, a little bit of an organizing thing, might be a little boring to you folks, I'll go, I'll go fast. Forum Do's and Don'ts, this is what the objectives are, you want to be able to teach people, teach people something really solid, something they can use today to protect their homes, and to engage them about the legislation, because sometimes, I say, what's happening in state legislature, a little too complicated for our, uh, for our tenants to understand, unless they understand it, we are not gonna have the voter support to get that legislation passed. And then, essentially, inspiring people, don't want these forums to be boring. Yeah? Forum Don'ts. Uh, do not give legal advice about an individual case, that's, uh, that's pretty important, actually, you know, in, uh, the Village Independent Democrats Tax Linking, we actually advise them the opposite. Uh, I was on the board of BID at the time, and I said, you know, people are coming to a clinic, and we're gonna tell them, assign this paper that is a disclaimer saying, this isn't legal advice, except forget about that, it is legal advice, let's just tell them, you know, that, like, a lawyer is liable not BID, and we did alright. But when you're addressing a large group of people, I think it's best that we do not give legal advice about individual cases, too much, uh, possibility for confusion. Make basic information, one thing that's true, tenants are getting more and more educated, they are on the internet, they know what's going on, so, just put basic information, like in rent stabilization, you can get succession rights if you live with a tenant two years prior to that payday. Everybody knows that. It's not like they don't, we, uh, they need to get information more specific, more better, uh, more really down to earth. And of course, can't have too many speakers, because you just can't have, like, 60 seconds each and impart, uh, stuff that's really good for people. So, my, uh, just retapping my argument, really seize the forums. Um, now, I think that it's good, because you do it over and over, and you're consolidating the community and empowering the community overall long period, and that's, that's much better than, you know, just one-shot deal. Um, and the other thing that's just a practical issue, like, you could recycle these topics over and over again, and then you get more experience, such as, um, if a forum didn't work, only two people showed up, dump it for next year, and then another one, five more people show up, make it bigger the next year, and then you get better and better at it, and also you educate yourselves about what is a base issue in our community. And then, um, it's really not about tenants. I see that you can use it as a base for other issues, such as, uh, health issues, children's issues, lead paint is still a big issue in, in Lower Manhattan, still have the bedbugs issue, it's a very important, uh, health issue, we have the issues of harassment, of course, being, uh, been discussed in the city council. And so, the, the, like, strengthening the tenants is a base for other issues. I won't talk about politics, now, that also has to do with judges, other politicians and stuff, but it's, it's a good base for everything else that you do. So, my, uh, my, uh, basis, my, uh, little presentation is over, uh, but, uh, my argument again, and I will continue to do work with Mr. McPherson and all the other people in the tenant committee, is that, uh, for CB2, it will be worthwhile to put a large amount of effort into this endeavor and to do it on a year-by-year commitment. Thanks. Thank you.
Uh, any questions for Mr. DeCastro? If you want to wind up over here and, uh, and ask your questions with the microphone?
Um, I live in the West Village, near Port Tinkus South. Sorry. Uh, I live in the West Village, near Port Tinkus South, and I lived there for a year. I just got, uh, my renewal notice, um, a week ago. My lease is over at the end of April, so in a month, basically. And, uh, they are raising my rent 38% in one year now. So, not knowing anything about city law, my building apparently is not stabilized anymore, even though I know there are apartments in it that are stabilized, in fact, one right next to me, and there she's probably paying anything to live there, she's a much larger apartment. But, so I wanted to know, one, is it legal for them to raise it that much? Um, two, should they have given me more notice? Because basically, right now, I need to give them an answer this week, whether I'm gonna stay or not, the third day. And what's my recourse? Do I have it?
Thank you. Okay, you know what, that is exactly what I was talking about, that, uh, that you'll have a new resident in our community who doesn't even, uh, who know, okay, well, what you do, a renewal, does landlord have a right to do that or not? Obviously, the key answer, the key answer is, are they rent stabilized? Um, you know, it's funny, because tenant lawyers, there are no tenant lawyers in, like, Wisconsin, or Montana, or whatever, you know, that's just like farmer with a shotgun, get out of the camp. But, uh, in New York City, uh, the issue is, are you rent stabilized? Now, a landlord could pull a little trip on you, just don't tell you whether you're rent stabilized or not, it's perfect. Uh, but, it doesn't matter if you're registered with the ECL, it doesn't matter whether the landlord gave you a rent-stabilized lease. What matters is if your building meets the criteria for rent stabilization. Now, if, um, now, you just stated your renewal increase is 38%. If that was the case, if you're rent stabilized, then, uh, it's clearly a rent overcharge. Uh, there are very few circumstances where it would not be. How, uh, now, if you're interested, if you guys are interested in how much a landlord could raise your rent-stabilized, uh, rent, yeah, we go to housingnyc.com, housingnyc.com. It's a dot com, but it's actually a governmental website for the Rent Guidelines Board. It will tell you what, you know, in whatever given year, how much the increase should be. But this is a perfect issue, we could just do a, we could just do a forum alone on, are you rent stabilized? We have a lot of people there, uh, you know, a lot of confused people there that we could help out.
Thank you very much. Uh, these gentlemen, the chief of the, yes, Renee O'Malley, she's in.
Yes, my name is David Hernandez, I live on the Chelsea Village border. And I have a problem in that there's really no resources for all the tenants that live in my building who are being forced out. Our landlord is St. Vincent's Hospital, they've doubled our rent, and as of June 2009, we're all being evicted. We don't have leases, we have rental agreements. We've tried to get some help through legal channels and we're being told rental agreements have no power in New York City. Since this is a hot, since this is the level one trauma center for New York City, basically in the event of another 9/11 or emergency, this is where people are going to go. Well, if people are not able to live near a hospital or in borough, there's not going to be any support staff in the hospital in the event, you know, problems. So, what, you know, what is the city thinking of doing to support this hospital, keep it open? Not so much the hospital, the staff, the people that live there. I mean, my wife and I have lived in this building for about eight years and we're being forced out. Development wants the property, everybody knows, land, the one thing they're not making any more of, they want land. The land that the hospital's on, the O'Toole Building, the building we live on, on 15th Street, there's a lot of things going on and it's all about this property. Mr. DeCastro, do you have anything?
Oh wow, that's pretty depressing. The, the issue, there's another hospital in our community that's, and another apartment building next to that hospital facing much the same thing. And a lot of times this issue of nonprofit ownership of the building can, can be pretty complicated. And it's, in the majority of situations, that does not confer rent stabilization rights. However, can speak to your individual case, actually, if I could, I would, because if I needed to buy a done case regarding the hospital, I would. But that would be a good issue, probably not for CB2 because that is a situation that is much better handled with a forum just from people from that house, you know, to deal with together. And I don't know if that has happened yet, but, you know, it is a very challenging issue.
Well, I think it is an issue that hopefully it could be brought to our committee so that we can discuss it further, because it sounds like it's something that needs to be talked about more and perhaps some recommendations that some of the elected officials might want to address. And this lady is next. So, keep, keep in touch with us and come to the, the next Tents Rights Committee in April and we can discuss that. By checking the website to the Community Board. The Community Board Two has a website which you can check and it will tell you the committees, when they are going to have meetings, and the agenda will be in places where this gentleman just spoke. We can arrive and discuss what he wants to talk about when we open up the meeting. CB2Manhattan.org, that's the website. And this young lady?
Hi, my name is Tony Spagnelli, I've lived in this neighborhood, Little Italy, my entire life. I am third generation in an apartment and my landlord is trying to charge me $5,000 a month. I'm in court with him for 18 months already. And there are no program lawyers in this tiny neighborhood. And I really think that people should know that. We need people to represent us, this is insane.
Thank you. You have a comment to add?
I think she said it all.
Well, I need help, so if anyone wants to help me, a lawyer, I need a lawyer.
So, Stephen, what, what happens when somebody can't afford an attorney, they have a housing issue, should they call legal aid? What are their other options? What options should they have?
Well, I think that it's a good thing, I think that, well, first of all, I think Gols, who is speaking, that's probably helped with the issue of community resources. There are two real issues are, does somebody qualify for legal aid, legal services? If they even think they could, they should be directed there to even give it a shot. And the other issue is people who have, who are mentally ill need to, there are, there are definite programs available for folks like that. So, I'm not sure if that's a good topic for a tenant forum, but the, the issue of how folks qualify for, for those services.
There's no legal aid, there's no legal services.
Well, Stephen, I want to point out, this young lady, that this is one of the issues that many people are not aware of, and that we would urge you to bring this to our community so that we can discuss the possibilities of how it can be addressed.
Another thing is this, this lady was saying that a landlord is trying to charge her $5,000 a month and like, in a situ, this is the perfect situation to see if your apartment is on the rent stabilized building list. Regarding housingnyc.com, there's, it said that it is on the list, but.
It's rent controlled.
See, so you thought about, but she said that it's on the list, but it's rent controlled. But there's a whole bunch of ways you can look into your building, even using the internet, that we could do a forum just about that, that people who walk into my office often have printouts from Department of Buildings, from HPD, and from ACRIS to find out who owns the building. And this information is very helpful, not only that, but, so if there's any possibility that anybody who lives in a market rate apartment below 14th Street should check to see whether their apartment is rent stabilized. That's for you and that's for you.
Thank you very much. The next gentleman, your name?
Yes, David, I'm John Fratton, President of the neighborhood, the Restoration Association. First of all, I want to thank Steve for our presentation, it's really very well, well done. I want to thank the community board for finally dealing with this very serious situation. The only thing is, this isn't a new situation, this has been going on in Little Italy for over 35 years and no one, no elected official, no one dealt with this issue in this community. People have been thrown out of their apartments and if they couldn't throw them out legally, what they did, they shut the heat off, the hot water off, they made the building become a slug, so people just got disgusted and moved. So, it really is an issue that's got to be dealt with and I want to commend the community board for finally taking that position. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Stephen. Another round of applause for Stephen Castro. Stephen, if folks want to get in touch with you, not to do a shameless promotion of your legal services, but I'll go ahead and do it since you're helping us out. You're at, you're on the web at?
That would be manhattanfirm.com.
Manhattanfirm.com. That, that is a web address perfect for this kind of crowd.
Well, the other thing about it is that there is a lot of free information on there that people can use, so they might actually read what's on Manhattanfirm.com and then decide not to call me because they have, they have the information and stuff, but it's on Manhattanfirm.com.
And Stephen, what's your telephone number over there?
It's 212-964-5364, 212-964-5364. I, I should also say I have a DVD called How to Fight a Housing Court Case.
Your phone number?
Oh, 212-964-5364. I have a DVD called How to Fight a Housing Court Case, which is distributed for free in New York County, usually from political offices like Scott Springer's offices, handed out something like 1,200, 1,400 of these DVDs. That could be some very important information, if you're facing a housing court case right now. That information is free to you, if you call my office, somebody will mail you a copy of that DVD. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. And one more point about staying on top of community board involvement, if you've signed up, the attendance sheet should be going around, there's a place for email addresses and you could be added to Community Board Two's email list. And every month you'll get a calendar from the community board about our upcoming meetings, including the Tenant's Rights Task Force. Yes, David?
Brad, it's an organization that Neighbors, Tenant and Neighbors Association, they also have a list of.
Right, I'm going to talk about that, right there.
Yeah, great, thank you, David. We're joined by two elected officials and I'd love, love if they are available to say a few words to us about this very important issue, because they represent this neighborhood and part of Community Board Two. The first is a simple one in different places.
First of all, let me thank the community board for holding this very, very important forum. And Stephen was right, we could probably do it every month on a different topic and fill the room. It's been an interesting couple of weeks in Albany, but we actually did get some business done and we took the first step by passing in the Assembly my bill that would ban phony demolitions. Many people know that these are basically landlords who have come in recently, bought up buildings, usually at a discount because the rent roll is not huge in comparison to some of these luxury buildings. So, they buy the building and then they simply tell people they're going to demolish the building and they're not going to renew leases and you're going to have to get out, because there is a loophole that allows for the eviction of tenants, rent regulated tenants, for the purpose of demolishing dilapidated buildings. But this is really being done to actually just throw people out of their apartments. They're not going to demolish the building, they're just going to rehab the building and ask for tons more money. So, this has been something that's been going on for really just the last several years and it's accelerated because there are law firms that specialize in this. And there are now landlords who specialize in this. And we have been in conversation with DHCR, Senator Liz Kruger, myself, Senator Connor and others have come together to create a, an elected officials task force to work with the new administration in DHCR, to make many changes, to roll back the Kentucky era undermining of tenant protection. So, there are great many things that we are working with, if we can get it changed in regulation, as you can imagine, that is easier than trying to get it passed by the state senate, which is still controlled by Republicans who have been the folks most hostile to tenants' rights. So, passing this in the Assembly is good for probably three reasons. One, it demonstrates that there is an issue that needs to be addressed. Two, it sends a signal to DHCR that people in our house are serious about making this change. And three, it actually starts the ball rolling, so we might in fact pass this and it would require that if a building is to be demolished, it actually all has to be demolished, not this gut rehab, interior renovation. And it also requires DHCR to reinstate a hearing. They used to do hearings so that tenants and others could come and argue whether or not the application should be approved. So, it would reinstate that hearing. There are a few other things that we've been working on. Issue of harassment's been accelerating because of greed. There is sin in the world and I would suggest to you that greed is the number one sin. We've been talking a lot about sin in Albany lately, but we have not been talking about the right sin and that is greed. And so, the kinds of harassment which Johnny Fratton mentioned involves all sorts of things, not providing heat, hot water, having disruptive construction around you, cutting a phone line, ooh, it was a mistake, your phone line gets cut every other week. Eventually, they open up the wall, they don't close it up, a whole lot of different problems that relate to that. But, we are now in the middle of the budget. The Assembly has passed its one House bill, the Senate sort of did a resolution, we're supposed to in the next week come out with a budget that everybody agrees to, might take a little bit longer. But we've put in $200 million in capital funding to support the creation and rehabilitation of affordable housing, 100 million of which would be targeted to downstate. That's very important to try to maintain and create new affordable housing. And we also organized with other elected officials to convince DHCR to eliminate the unique and peculiar loophole which allowed Mitchell Llamas that were buying out to all of a sudden, under a unique and peculiar category, jump up rents, you know, hugely. This was not a unique and peculiar circumstance. They knew they were going to buy out, they went aiming to buy out, that's the, that, there's nothing unique or peculiar about it and DHCR has now closed that loophole, which is a huge victory for all of us. And we're hoping to have more, more changes from DHCR. They have made changes to their website to make it a little more accessible and user-friendly. They're updating and clarifying their informational sheets, we've asked them to include a place where you could write in about harassment, so that they don't, so there's a record of the kind of harassment that when you file a complaint, that that's included, if you are going in for like a service, a car, where the service has been diminished, could also include harassment. And they have now hired more enforcement and investigators in their unit which reviews harassment complaints, so hopefully there won't be as much of a backlog. But the most important thing is to talk to your neighbors, to be unified and to work together and to reach out to local elected officials. People have come to us to say that they're getting, they're being told, this isn't your primary residence, we're taking you to court. They can only raise that issue during a lease renewal. They can't in the middle of your lease, all of a sudden saying, this, we don't think you live here all the time, the super says you're not around all the time. They cannot challenge your primary residency status unless you're in a lease renewal situation. They can't do it in the middle of your lease. People get scared, they can't afford an attorney, there's a million frivolous lawsuits that the landlord brings up. Call your elected officials, we'll send a letter, we have people back off all the time. They get a letter from us, we say, you know full well that this is not the circumstance, you can't do it at this time, you can't, and we advise, we don't give little advice, we just suggest to individuals, I'm not an attorney, we suggest to people that if you have another place somewhere, your mother had a bungalow somewhere and was left to you and your sister or something, and you have every right to go away on a weekend and not have your residence taken away from you. But don't register your car there, don't register to vote there, don't, you know, necessarily get your mail sent there. Don't do things that load the gun, because Stephen was right, they hire investigators. Don't answer questions when somebody calls you out of the blue and starts asking you about your housing or anything like that. Do not load the gun for them. Something else we talked about a lot in Albany this week. So, but call your elected officials, we're there to help and there are many things that we can do to give you information and to perhaps write a letter from our office and make it clear that there are statutory requirements and they're operating outside of that. And, you know, you've got to have pushback. And if everybody in your building is having the same stuff happen to them, organize, get together and organize and don't be cut off one at a time, cut out of the herd, one after another after another. Together, you can fight the individuals, keep cleaning it up, who are at your throat. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Assembly member. We're also joined by two more community. We're also joined by two more Community Board members. It seems she's our staff photographer, but she's not. She's the chair of our sidewalks committee, Zella Jones. And I'm one of the leaders of Social Services and Education Committee, this is her leader. And now I'm going to hear from another staunch tenant advocate, Senator Mark Connor.
Thanks, Brad, and thanks to everybody on Community Board Two for sponsoring this forum and Don's work on the committee and your ongoing work on the Tenants' Protection Committee. Deborah gave you a good picture of what's gone on in the Potaki administration, and frankly, there were 12 years where the scales were very much tipped against tenants and in favor of some conservative concept of ownership having all sorts of rights that they didn't have. One of the things I discovered early on the Potaki administration was something I called cheap rock decontrol. The way they were interpreting the law under Potaki at DHCR, if you changed the size of an apartment, then you could, while the land was vacant, then you could grab them at a market rate because it wasn't the same apartment. And we actually found apartments where they would put up cheap rock in, say a five room apartment, just wall off on room, not use it, just walled off, forget it was there, and then why Google the rent, because, oh, it's a different apartment, it's now a four room apartment instead of a five room apartment. So actually you had buildings where they had all these walled off rooms, and they weren't used, so you could get more money. The other thing, as Deborah talked about, was this phony demolition, it wasn't a demolition, it's a renovation, move a couple of walls around, put up a new wall, another door in, but kick all the tenants out because it's a demolition, DHCR was letting them get away with that, and that's why we all introduced legislation, which Deborah has passed in the Assembly. Frankly, it's not going to pass in the state senate unless control of that house changes. If you look, and I don't want, this is not a political meeting, but just look, you just have to read up or go on the website and see that the Real Estate Board and the big real estate interests contribute literally hundreds of thousands of dollars to the present majority that's ruled the state senate from there since 1966, and they will not do any legislation that goes against owners or landlords. So why do we still have rent control, rent stabilization? Well, they were brutal fights in the Potaki years, we get those extended, and they weren't without a price, and we're losing affordable housing from rent stabilization because of the decontrol mechanisms that are triggered by people's income, by the rental on their apartment, or by all these other tricks DHCR, whether it was phony demolitions and all the other excuses, and why this conservative effort to say that people don't really reside there. And I'm actually, I am a lawyer, not offering to be all your lawyers, I got a full-time job taking care of the senate, but I have a lot of experience with residence cases, and, you know, there are a lot of people, we all know, who do have a little cottage somewhere else, and they registered their car there because the insurance is so much cheaper. If you do that, you're asking for it, as Deborah said, you're just giving them the ammunition. You don't want to be standing in a housing court explaining to a judge that you were cheating on the law by registering your car somewhere where you didn't live because you wanted to save money on insurance, while everybody else who lives in New York City is paying the higher rate, so you're entitled, you have more than one property, you're entitled to stay at your vacation home, not just weekends, you can stay there, part of either if you want, but if you're maintaining your principal residence, certain things just have to be there. That's where you vote, that's where you pay taxes, that's where you register automobiles, that's where you have your driver's license, you have to do that, you can do that. With the new administration, the last one in the current one, I guess we've got two in a week, we have, we do have a whole new administration at DHCR, and they have been responding to our meetings and retreats about changing the interpretation, these very strange anti-tenant interpretations, to back to, not to be pro-tenant, to be fair, to make them say what they say. If it says demolition, we all know what that means, the building isn't there anymore after everyone gets out, they're demolished, not that it's the same building, but they moved around a few rooms, it became nicer. So these are important issues. Some coming up, I view next year perhaps will be a real sea change in Albany, and then we'll be able to go back to some basics, some basics like repealing the ERSTAT law. People know the ERSTAT law? The ERSTAT, which I've hyped, and one of the sponsors of that in the senate, again, with this majority of Joe Bruno there, we're not going to pass that, I think we're going to see some change next year. That basically takes away from New York City something that it once had, and that is control over its own housing situation, its own housing emergency, which is based on very low occupancy rates, and scarce housing, and the ERSTAT law said that New York City could no longer pass any rent regulations, and it transferred all the power to the state, and it was very much, you know, a pro landlord, went past and remains a pro landlord measure. We're going to repeal that. We're going to let New York City and the city council govern, govern its own regulations, make its own determinations to protect its own citizens and tenants. And I think with that change, we're also going to see a real effort to do away with these decontrol mechanisms based on the amount of rent and so on, the Potaki forced into the law seven, eight, nine years ago. And because we are losing, because of that, we are losing affordable housing stock rapidly. And all that does is feed the greed, increase the pressure on existing tenants by owners to get them out, harass them out, trick them out, or do whatever, so they can make more money, and because gee, they, you know, they got a friend that owns a building, they've got lucky, and they got a lot of people in apartments, and look how much money he or she's making, so I want to do it. So we have to end that culture of greed and get back to one of responsibility, affordable housing, responsible ownership that responds to the needs of the tenants, and that's our legislative agenda. Now with respect to your own harassment, or whatever's going on with respect to your own tenancy, as Deborah said, please contact your elected officials, try her office first. No, you call my office too. We have staff there, and as they say, we may not be able to represent you in court, we can't do that, but we can direct you to places where organizations, some of whom you will hear from tonight, that have information, that provide support, that will help you organize, if it's something every one of your buildings is experiencing, so that we can help your problems in their brighter ways. I should point out, one of the other things the Potaki administration did was they cut all funding for civil legal services, just cut it out, that's why you can't get a lawyer. It's legal aid, they love to help you, they don't have lawyers, don't hire lawyers in Legal Aid, they're not allowed to represent you. The LLA can do to handle a criminal case load, and one of, what little civil legal services existed really owed to the Assembly, which every year restores some money to the budget to provide a model of civil legal services, but it's so little compared to the need, that, so that's something else we're going to change, you know, civil legal services are important. And let me say to you, about just organizing your tenants and just being politically aware, you know, tenants aren't just tenants. Obviously, when you approach any election, you have a lot of considerations, a lot of issues you care about, a lot of issues you base your vote on and you support, but let me suggest to you, nothing, nothing is kind of more fundamental than who's going to help you keep the roof over your head, and help you stay in the home where you've lived, so I'm not saying maybe it's your only concern, but whatever, well, anybody who comes around, ask me for your vote for any office, always want to ask him or her, where do you stand on these issues, where do you stand on tenant protection, because that's very, very important. Who decide thereon could depend someday on whether literally you get to stay at your home. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to hand things over to the chair of the Social Services and Education Committee, Keen Berger, who's going to introduce our next expert witness. As I hand over to Keen, I just want to mention, all of you, we're going to try to have, I know a number of people have come here to talk about their specific cases, and I, you'll have an opportunity, obviously, within your questions, but many of you have come to talk about your specific residences and want to talk about it, so please stay here, you'll have an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
All right. It is my privilege to introduce Anderson Feesamay, who is representing tenants and neighbors. This is an organization that we all need to be grateful for and to get in touch with, that really has fought over the years very well for the rights of tenants. So Anderson, you obviously will say more about all this, but I'm delighted that you're with us.
Good evening, good evening, and thank you to Community Board Two and to all fine elected officials. There will be a sea change this year in order, because we will make that happen, because we will make that happen. I'm glad that they said it before I said it, because it's all about politics. This very classroom that you're in, there's rules and regulations that set forth how many seats, where the exit signs are, how far the stages, egress, all these things, those are laws. That just didn't happen. Those are laws, people sat around and negotiated for those things to happen. So if there's only one message that I have for you tonight, is to take that and look at it regarding your own personal housing, okay? Because the crisis is here, I've got some good news to get to here tonight, that there's still a whole bunch of work to do, and it has to come from all of you in here. These, we are the people that make a sibling woman good, and State Senator Connor, and State Senator Dwayne, and City Council Speaker Quinn, we are the ones, the Community Board, we are the ones that make them go, okay? We are the ones that make them go, they work for us, and I don't want you to forget that. I want you to remember that right now, going forward. All right? So a fine hand to Mr. Castro, who has allowed my PowerPoint to be set up, and a warm thanks to Mr. McPherson, who invited me here tonight.